A call to order, the meeting of the Lake Mills City Council for December fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Misty, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Foster?
Here.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Here.
Mr. Grundon?
Here.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Here.
Mr. Schar?
Here.
Mr. Knippel?
Corrections and approval of the city council minutes for December first, two thousand and fifteen. Do you hear motion of approval?
So moved.
A second, please.
Second.
And call the vote.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Schar?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Item four, correspondence. Diane?
Well, I got a copy of that letter that all of you got from Main Street regarding the, from Lee Shanicker. Did the rest of you receive that as well? It was in your email.
Mm-hmm.
I wanted to respond to it unless someone else preferred to do that.
Please, go ahead.
Okay. Well, I was a little concerned about the fact that the information in the letter made it sound like we had not done a good job on the council to try to get the best deal we could with the South Main Street program. And it was a little frustrating for me as a council member because we have all worked very hard on the council trying to get changes. The truck route was mentioned. I know that Rudy, I think you personally tried to get the truck route in the city of Lake Mills dropped from the state.
Mm-hmm.
And did the, had no, no, that didn't happen because the state wouldn't even consider it. Is that not true?
State highway.
State highway department has said we will be a truck route whether we like it or not. It has nothing to do with the council here. Second of all, the comments that were made that we hadn't tried to do what we could do for the trees, and it's just a case in fact that when you rip up tree roots, the trees die. It would be like, you know, cutting off our lower extremities. It does not help our bodies. And that's the same with the trees. We have come up with a plan at the last meeting for doing some nice things with South Main after the construction is done. That should make it very appealing, but evidently talk on, on social media is that we have not done our job, and I am very upset about that.
Excuse me, Diane, and that is, that picture of that has been placed on city website for people to see.
So, and the other part is the fact that the decision to widen the road was not a choice that we made. It was a choice we were given because the federal government requires the bike lanes. And it, we tried to get that dropped. We came up with alternative bike routes. We were told, no, that isn't how it is done. You will have bike routes on the road. Well, that makes the difference in the wideness of the road. So, I'm glad to hear that the gentleman cares about Lake Mills, and that's, we agree with that. But please, get accurate information before you put it on social media because we have tried very hard, all five of us and Mr. Wookiee, have all tried very hard to do the very, very best we can do to make the South Main Street development the most people-friendly as we can make it for Lake Mills. In that voice, we have two open council seats. If the people who are saying we aren't doing a good job think that they could do a better job, the whole city is up for reelection. Anybody in Lake Mills can run. Every person in Lake Mills that is a citizen that can vote can run, and this is your time. You can take the papers out now and get your name on the ballot, come up here and do a better job than we've been doing. We've been working very hard, and you can't always fix everything the way you want it. Thank you.
Could I make a comment?
Sure.
Excuse me. I've known Lee quite a while. He's pretty knowledgeable about these things. He, he did admit at the beginning of the letter that he only had seen what was written in a, an opinion letter, and that, so he was asking questions. So I have sent him a lot of information, and I'm talking to him Thursday. So I'm assuming that, you know, maybe we can, he can understand where we're at, what we've had to deal with, and kind of say, you know, all he did was really say, you need to ask these questions, and now he's got the information on the fact that we have asked those questions. We've gone through them in depth. We've explored multiple, multiple alternatives. And so it, it's not as clear-cut as it might appear, and there were some, you know, debates as, we've already signed the SMA. We are kind of committed. We did look at financial alternatives of doing it on our own, and that wasn't a reasonable expectation in order to be able to keep up with our debt margin and our capital improvement plan. So through the whole process, I think that, that he will come to understand that, that we have been doing due diligence, but I think his letter was written more as questions of have you, and some people are using it as a, they have not. That's not true.
Well, bottom line is that the construction is gonna, is gonna happen. The two options are, we let the state pay for most of it. The trees are gonna come down, or we can tell the state to take a hike and, and we can do it. Either way, the trees are coming down. So, you know, we've made every effort to try to stay within the character of the city. It's not gonna happen right away, but once the construction's done, I think if you'll look at the picture on the website, I think you'll be very pleased with, with the results. That'll happen once construction's finished and we get the decorations, if you will, streetlights and, and new trees and whatever planted. So just bear with us for now. That's all I can tell you. Steve?
Same email, and actually I was out just collecting signatures. Lot of discussion about American Way, South Main Street project, but a lot of good conversations. So that was a good two weeks, actually.
Good?
Nothing. Right?
Well, first off, I don't remember seeing the email. I guess I'll have to go back and look, but there's nothing in my email, so either I got missed or something happened, but...
It was sent out by Main Street.
Oh, okay. And then the only other call I had is an item that we have on the agenda tonight, so I'm not gonna talk about it until we get to those items, or that item.
Okay, and I had the correspondence also. So that being said, we'll close correspondence and go to questions and public comments. Misty, would you read that, please?
Questions and public comment. The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda unless the item is a subject of a public hearing. If your comments pertain to a public hearing, you are asked to hold your comments until the hearing. Public comment may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meetings law discourages action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when starting your comments and fill out the sign-in sheet provided.
Is there any public comments? If not, we'll close public comments and questions and go to item six, city manager's report. Steve?
I don't have anything additional to add. I provided the capital budget, the general fund budget, the April appraisal report, which is a new report that they're required to do annually. That was one of the things that I talked about. The two thousand and sixteen clean boats, clean water budget, then the city's application and participation in that project. And then a definition of Assembly Bill five eighty-two, which we had talked about last month. Other than that, I don't have anything unless there are any questions. I have been corresponding with Lee Shanicker and have a good relation, long-term relationship with Lee, and have provided him a lot of data since his letter came in, and hope to be able to clear up any issues he had.
Acceptance and minutes of the Joint Rock Lake Committee of October sixth, two thousand and fifteen, and the planning commission minutes of October twenty-seventh, two thousand and fifteen, and the zoning board of appeal from May sixth, two thousand and fifteen. They'll go on record as read. Item eight, council business miscellaneous licenses. We have a tavern operators' application for Eric Seaman. Do I have a motion of acceptance?
I would like to make a motion to deny. And the reason for not granting the license is that the applicant does not meet the statutory qualifications for the license under one twenty-five point four, parent five. And I would also like to instruct the city clerk to inform the applicant writing of the decision of the council.
And do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? Misty, would you call the vote?
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Schar?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
And the second miscellaneous licenses, a new business to the city with Pyramid Liquor and Motel for a cigarette and tobacco, license application.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? And they were required because they, we annexed the, that property, so they have to comply with city regs and get licenses from the city now. So if there's no discussion, Misty, would you call the vote?
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Schar?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Item B is the discussion decision on acceptance of the Plan Monitoring Assessment Report from Steve Glasgow. This was motion fifteen dash twelve dash two dash one. Misty, if you could read that, please.
City Council motion fifteen dash twelve dash two dash one, accepting the Lake Mills Strategic Plan Monitoring and Assessment Report and authorizes the city manager to place on file. Be it moved by the city council of the city of Lake Mills, Wisconsin as follows. Section one, that the city of Lake Mills City Council has received and reviewed the Lake Mills Strategic Plan Monitoring and Assessment Report dated November three, two thousand and fifteen, a copy of which is attached hereto and made a part hereof. Section two, that the city of Lake Mills City Council understands that by passing this motion, they are in agreement with the report. Section three, that the city council and city manager have used said document to understand what actions have been implemented and administered for the strategic plan. Section four, that the city clerk has directed to file a copy of this motion as an official city document. The city council does hereby approve the motion and authorizes the council president to sign the motion.
Do I have a motion of acceptance?
So moved.
And a second, please.
Second.
Discussion?
That was from Steve Grable, UW Extension.
I just wanted to mention that since we're probably approving this, one of the things in it was to get pictures of the council members on the website, and I don't think that's happened yet. So, not that I'm crazy about having my picture taken, but I think it's important that our people know who we are.
Agreed. Misty, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Schar?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
I ask our fellow council members if they could get their picture taken, and where would that be, Misty?
She'll check into it.
I will check into that and see what we can schedule.
All righty then.
Can take a selfie and send it to you.
Yeah.
And with two of the five seats up, you may want to wait until just after the election?
I could do that, yeah. Thanks, Ed. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Unless you want yours on there, that might help for the election, so maybe you should have it up.
Yeah, you never know.
Okay.
I think we should, it isn't that hard to do.
It really isn't.
And even if, even the fact that you're not running again, you're still gonna be serving until April's first, first, second meeting in April will be the first one you're not on.
Yep.
And you're just, you're important.
But nobody knows who I am, and I'd maybe slip away without that.
Oh, too late. We're gonna get ya.
Just, you want a blank silhouette sitting there?
Okay, item C, this is a discussion decision on a donation request from the Jefferson County Solid Waste Air Quality Committee for Clean Sweep. This would be motion fifteen dash two dash two, I mean, sorry, fifteen dash twelve dash two, dash two. Misty, if you would, please.
City Council motion fifteen dash twelve dash two dash two, directing the city manager to make a donation on behalf of the city council, whereas the Clean Sweep and Recycling Program of Jefferson County, which serves the Lake Mills area, has requested that the city of Lake Mills consider making a donation to the Clean Sweep and Recycling Program of Jefferson County, and whereas the council of the city of Lake Mills desires to make a donation to the Clean Sweep and Recycling Program of Jefferson County, and whereas the council of the city of Lake Mills desires to promote the opportunity to safely dispose of hazardous products which keeps these products out of landfills and lowers the environmental risks associated with such improper disposal. Now be ther, now be it therefore moved that the city council of the city of Lake Mills does hereby authorize the city manager to make a donation of one thousand dollars to the Clean Sweep and Recycling Program of Jefferson County from the WPPI Economic Development Fund.
Do I have a motion of acceptance?
So moved.
And a second, please.
Second.
Steve, could you fill us in on, what have we done in the past on this?
We have consistently not made any effort to even debate it.
I mean, we, we've passed.
This is, yeah. We've generally gotten the letter, I've distributed it, and it's never come to the council before. Mike is the first one that...
It's never been before in the council?
Nope, never been discussed at the council level before. We have received the letters, and they have been distributed, but it was never, never discussed at council level. Generally, the consensus was that, and debated somewhat in my memo, is that the county runs the program. And as a resident of the county already, we are contributing at an equal basis as everybody else in the county, unless they decide to make a donation, and I mentioned a couple that had made donations. They do not put it on the levy, they do it through revenues generated by the landfill that they lease to waste management. That being said, that money would reduce our property tax, so it's, it's basically six, one half dozen of the other. It's just a, a transfer of, of revenue systems. So from that standpoint, I think we've always considered it, that we are contributing, that we're contributing on an equal basis. And so I went through, I kind of went through my memo and tried to make sure that we understand that if we make the contribution, it's because we value it at a high level and we think the program has benefit. We also looked at it and said that donating from the WPPI Economic Development Fund spreads it across to greater amount of people than just the citizens of Lake Mills, so it's less of a burden on us specifically. There's some debate as to if it were on the property tax, the citizens of Lake Mills would probably pay a higher rate than most of the other residents in Jefferson County because the property values here tend to be higher. So it's kind of a wash one way or the other, in my opinion, but the, the real debate is, is do you value that service and do you think it's worthy of continuing and, and making the extra effort to make it of a value to the city?
Steve, was this just, you think, brought on by the bottoming out of recycling, because that's really dropped in the past, in the, you know, past months? Or was there some funding cut to the county from the state?
No, the county has always made, always sent out letters. Every single year, as long as they've been running this program, they've sent out letters. And, like, Watertown has consistently made a pretty substantial contribution. This is really, the recycling market has always been up and down, but generally, our people have been able to move the recycling product. This, these materials are hazardous wastes, and when they call this recycling, it's not really recycling. It's just figuring out how to properly dispose of this type of waste. Generally, what happens is, is you have people who value the proper disposal, and they pay to have it disposed of properly, and then you've got a group of people who take it out in their backyard and dump it in the grass, or they dump it down the storm drain, or they dump it down the sanitary sewer, and it gets into the, into the, the water system and becomes a very hazardous waste to the people of the community. So the program has a significant value. It's who's paying for it, I think, ultimately, and what our lost opportunity costs are. What could we do with that money if we weren't putting it towards this? Is this something that we value enough to, that it overrides everything else?
And I'd like to put in a positive word for Main Street and for John's, that does our recycling and our garbage pickup, because for the last few years, we had been working with a local establishment, Main Street had, and we had a spring and fall electronics pickup. And when that, that, the monies that was going in part to Main Street, and when it shifted and, and Main Street wasn't getting any money from it, then that electronics part stopped. We still have shredding, but we don't have electronic pickup as of this past year. But that was a good program that was run by the Bank of Lake Mills and by Main Street for a number of years. And then the gentleman running it retired, and, and then as things happen, when somebody retires and you get new people, it changed somewhat.
Jefferson County's program has partners. There's one in Watertown, there's one in Jefferson, there's one in Fort Atkinson, there's one in Whitewater. I imagine the one in Whitewater might be through John's, and they might take care of that for us. John's does pick up on certain dates, they do pick up certain hazardous wastes. So on bulk pickup day, they'll pick up oil, they'll pick up paint, they'll pick up a lot of those types of hazardous wastes, take them. TVs, a lot of the electronics, they do not pick up. So then that becomes an issue out there for us, and they, they contain a significant amount of hazardous waste in them, so it, it does have a benefit.
And I, I belong to a few different Facebook pages, some that are here in town, some that are in other areas. The one here in Lake Mills, I noticed this last week, there were some people asking specifically, what do we do? How do we get rid of this stuff? And there was quite a bit of response on it, and majority of the folks did point them to the spot over on Katy Street in, in Watertown. And I know that whenever I go down there to take something, drop something off, the place is either full or it's empty. So they're moving stuff there, and I would just hate to think of what would happen to that stuff if there wasn't something or someplace for people to take it. I know you mentioned it a few moments ago, that most people will do the right thing and pay to get it removed, but there are some people that are, they don't have the funds and things like that, so they take a different way to do it, and I would just hate to see, as much stuff as I see down there in just Watertown, I would hate to see that strewn all over our roads and, and farms and get that down into our water. So that's one reason why I asked Steve to have this put on the agenda, so we could at least talk about it.
And Katy Street's what, oil and electronics, correct?
Yep.
Okay. And this is toxic, corrosive drugs? I mean, that's what, that's what we're talking about here.
We do drugs. When you do this program, you're donating to the county.
Correct.
And they have a, they get a grant from the state, which is partially federally funded, and they contribute to making those programs work in Watertown and Jefferson and Fort. And, and so like here, we do our own drug program here, and they have provided the assistance to help set it up. We deliver the, the drugs to them, and they take care of that. We haven't set up an independent hazardous waste or e-recycling site, Main Street to do two semi-annual projects, but those come and go. It depends. The one on Katy Street, the one in Fort Atkinson, the one in Jefferson are pretty consistent. They're set up where you can, on a certain date, you can go drop it off at that site.
What would maybe be helpful, and I don't know if John's would be willing to do that, but if they could put the address of those sites you just mentioned on that printout they have for garbage pickup, because it's not on there, and if it, it, it just, you know, it doesn't say where to go with your TV and computers and things like that, and some people just don't know.
Was the one on Katy run by John's?
No, but...
See, that's why it wouldn't all be on ours.
Yeah, it, that might be appropriate to put on our website. It might be helpful information.
Isn't it on our...
I think it's already on our website, yeah.
Should be on our website.
And all you have to do is pop in Clean Sweep, and you get every one of them in the county. I mean, I got every, in fact, every time I tried to do a, a search for a good memo or motion, I kept getting all the data on drop-off sites.
So ju, just to reiterate, the Clean, the Clean Sweep is a county-run project, and anyone can take their, their hazardous waste and, and solid waste, and it's for a very small donation, it'll take care of it. It has no bearing on whether or not the, the city donates to the program or not, so I guess that's what we're looking at.
And you're not, you're not required to donate either.
Right.
In fact, most of the time, I don't think there's anybody there.
No.
Okay.
It's things like turpentine and, you know...
It depends on which site you go to. I think the one on Katy Street is, is oil and e-tronics and...
And then John's pick that up too.
And the charges based on...
On the third, the third...
They'll pick up used oil, I think they'll pick up...
They'll use up used oil, but I don't think...
Turpentine, I think if they put that...
Yeah, it's a petroleum.
Okay. Didn't know that.
They probably wouldn't pick up, like Roundup or something like that. I doubt if they would pick that up, but anyhow.
Put it out and see if they pick it up. And what, they don't pick up, then that you'll have to take over to the sites.
They've taken, they've taken paint from me.
Yeah, I know.
And mineral spirits.
Anything that's got oil in it, they take.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, that's good to know.
Okay. Any other discussion? So Misty, would you call the vote?
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Schar?
No.
Motion passed four to one.
Item D, discussion decision on appointment of election inspectors. This is motion fifteen dash twelve dash two dash three. If you would, Misty.
City Council motion fifteen dash twelve dash two dash three, appointment of election inspectors, whereas Wisconsin statutes provide for the appointment of election inspectors, and whereas there's a need to appoint election inspectors for the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen term, and whereas section seven point three zero sub four of the Wisconsin statutes allows the two dominant parties to submit a list of names from which appointments shall be made, and names are provided by both the Jefferson County Republican Party and Democratic Party of Jefferson County, and said names are included in the city clerk's recommended list of election inspectors, namely, Republican Jill Durrin, Ann Hunt, Marie Mertz, Democrat Gloria Chonacki, Jane Harburg, Amy Phillips, undesignated John Berman, Carol Burrows, Jen Christian, Susan Conrad, Debbie Cornella Kurt, Vicky Cromie, Sue Dale, Janet Iverson, Marion Hauser, Larry Jelkin, Carl Johnson, Kathy Johnson, Elaine Newhouse, Deanne Pearson, Kathy Riley, B. Rochile, Lynette Smith, Peg Storrs, Sandy Wall, Becky Winters, Barbara Zastro. Be it therefore moved by the city council of the city of Lake Mills, Wisconsin as follows. Section one, that the city councils review the list of election inspectors recommended for appointment by the city clerk. Section two, that the city council confirms the city clerk's recommended election inspectors. The city council does hereby confirm the election inspectors and does hereby... The City Council does hereby confirm the election inspectors and does hereby authorize the president to sign the motion.
And to hear a motion of adoption?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundin?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Schar?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Item E, discussion decision on appointment of special voting deputies. And this is motion fifteen dash twelve dash two dash three. No. Should be four, right?
Yeah, twelve two four.
Yeah, twelve two four.
City Council motion fifteen dash twelve dash two dash four, appointment of special voting deputy. Whereas Wisconsin statutes provide for the appointment of special voting deputies and there's a need to appoint a special voting deputy for the two thousand fifteen, sixteen term. And whereas, under state statute six point eight seven five, absentee voting in person inside residential care facilities and qualified retirement homes shall be conducted by special voting deputies. And whereas, the Lake Mills City Clerk recommends the appointment of Jill Dureen as a special voting deputy. Be it therefore moved by the City Council of the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin as follows. Section one, that the City Council has reviewed the special voting deputy recommended for appointment by the city clerk. Section two, that the City Council confirms the appointment of Jill Dureen as a special voting deputy. The City Council does hereby confirm the special voting deputy and does hereby authorize the council president to sign the motion.
And to hear a motion of adoption?
So moved.
And a second, please?
A second.
I have a question. What's the difference between a special voting deputy and a special registration?
The special voting deputy is the one person who can actually go in, um, to do the absentee voting in the retirement homes and nursing homes. The registration is to actually register individuals to be electors in the city.
So do they work on the registration at the polls or do they, that's what they do?
For, for this one, for the voting deputy, this is just to go to, to the nursing homes, to do absentee voting with myself and Heather.
The next one is at the site?
And the next one is, um, special registration deputies, which is, takes place prior to the close of registration. They can register individuals.
Okay. Thank you for answering my question.
Do I get a motion of adoption?
Yes.
Okay. And we got a second too, right?
Yep.
Okay. Any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Mr. Grundin?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Schar?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Item G, discussion decision on the park fee increase. This is motion fifteen dash twelve dash two dash six.
Did we do the registration deputies?
We've got one more of the registration deputies.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. It's the City Council motion fifteen dash twelve dash two dash five, appointment of special registration deputies. Whereas Wisconsin statute six point two six provides for the appointment of special registration deputies and there's a need to appoint special registration deputies for the two thousand fifteen, sixteen term. And whereas, the city clerk recommends that Jill Dureen and Kimberly Peterson be appointed as special registration deputies to assist the city clerk and deputy clerk in registering electors of the municipality prior to the close of registration. Be it therefore moved by, by the City Council of the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin as follows. Section one, that the City Council has reviewed the special registration deputies recommended for appointment by the city clerk. Section two, that the City Council confirms the appointment of Jill Dureen and Kimberly Peterson as special registration deputies. The City Council does hereby confirm the regis- special registration deputies and does hereby authorize the council president to sign the motion.
And to hear a motion of adoption?
So moved.
And a second, please?
Second.
Discussion?
I have a question. How do the people, like in this case, this, this position, how does the person get selected?
Um, Jill Dureen, I, I've asked her, she's helped with us in the past, she's worked at elections. She's also the chief election inspector that's been appointed for, was appointed for the, um, earlier election this year. And Kim Peterson, uh, works at the front desk. So if I'm not available or Heather's not available, Kim is usually the person who's able to help customers. So she, we asked her to be one specifically if Heather, I couldn't register somebody at the counter during business hours.
I, this is nothing personal, cause I don't think I know Jill. But I am concerned that we have someone who's designated as a Republican, um, inspector who is doing the nursing home things. I think it would be much better if we had one was, who was an undesignated. Because, you know, that's, you know, I just think it would be better if we didn't have one who's a designated party person.
The only reason they're designated is because the Republican Party sent in the letter requesting that they specifically be worked. When the parties send in those requests, those peo- those are the first in line to be chosen to be election inspectors. So if they were to go through everybody in the list and pick one or the other, all those people would fall under a designated category. Because they didn't, everybody else just falls under undesignedated.
Okay. I think it's a really important job. Going to a nursing home and talking to the people there and making sure they vote the way they want to vote, not the way they're being told to vote.
And just so everybody's aware too, it's not a one-person job that goes. It's, um, there's actually, it's, there has to be two.
There do.
Yes. So either myself or Heather and I've, the last time it was Jill and Heather actually being the, the voting deputies and I was there to assist with any questions, um, and just to help with organization with it, to make sure it ran smoothly. So it's not a one person working with one individual.
Okay.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
To be in these positions, do you need a additional training?
There is additional train that is required. Election inspectors in whole, well, all of them require two hours of training. I believe it's annually, um, or at least every other year. And then the chief election inspector is required to do six hours of training every two years. Um, and Jill, as well as a couple of others, have that training and they have to have a baseline training, which is separate. Um, and if they don't get their six hours of training every two years, they lose that certification and have to start all over. There's a lot of training that goes into it and Jill has taken the training. And Kim, this will be her first time being appointed. So if and when she's appointed, then we'll, uh, work with her as far as being trained for registration purposes.
Well, I'm glad to hear there are two, when they go out to do it.
And that's for the, and I am sorry, I should apologize, that was for the last one, that was for the absentee voting. This one is the registration deputies.
Is that done here?
That's done here. Occasionally it can be done outside and that can be one person, but that's just registering, that's not, this one is just registration. I think your question was more geared to the, to the voting itself.
Right. Okay.
So the last one, which was that, but is to, registration is just one and again, there's training for all of these positions.
Okay. Thank you for answering.
Was that all your questions, Steve?
Okay.
We're at, we lost track.
We have, we have a motion, right?
Yes, we've got a motion in a second, so.
Do we have a second?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead and call the vote then.
Mr. Kerkovich? Mr. Schar?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundin?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Okay, now we'll go to item G. This is discussion decision on the park fee increase and this is fifteen dash twelve dash two dash six. Misty, if you would.
City Council motion fifteen dash twelve dash two dash six, um, amending established fees for certain parks activities, Lake Mills, Wisconsin. Whereas section seven dash seven dash eight and seven dash seven dash twenty of the municipal code of the City of Lake Mills authorizes and directs the city council from time to time to establish a schedule of fees relating to the use and operations of city parks. Now therefore be it moved, that the following scheduled fee shall govern the use and operation of the certain park activities from and after December thirty-one, two thousand fifteen. One, sandy beach large shelter, city resident, seventy-five dollars to eighty-five dollars. Non-city resident, one hundred dollars to one hundred and twenty-five dollars. Two, sandy beach small shelter, city resident, forty dollars to fifty dollars. Non-city resident, forty dollars to sixty-five dollars. Three, second trailer watercraft and parking space, fifty cents to one dollar per day during the off-season. This motion becomes effective January one, two thousand sixteen.
A motion of adoption?
So moved.
And a second, please?
Second.
And Steve, this is yours, would you fill us in?
Well, first, there was something I did notice, the, the motion, the memo, both had the right items on them, but in the city park boot, what the fees charged in that document, he highlighted, somebody highlighted the wrong, it says the band shelter and the small. But, uh, looking for, this is the, uh, sandy beach large and small shelter that are going up. Uh, and mainly the size of the groups renting it and the length of time they're spending in them. Um, it's just more raising it ten dollars to get it ready and clean it up more for each of those shelters. Uh, the third one was the, the watercraft second, second vehicle in a space, uh, fifty cents to a dollar. That's more housekeeping, makes everything, got zeros on it because looking at history, no one's ever had a second watercraft in a parking spot. So, um, not an overly used fee.
And we have a-
I had a good laugh when I saw fifty cents.
Fifty cents and it hasn't been-
I wondered how long we'd had that one on the books.
Been on for a long time. No one's really had a second watercraft, uh, so.
Any other discussion? Call the vote, Misty.
Mr. Schar?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundin?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
This is for item H, this is motion fifteen dash twelve dash two dash seven. This is the, uh, baseball and softball diamond fee usage, or usage fee. If you'd read that, Misty?
City Council motion fifteen dash twelve dash two dash seven, establishing new fees for certain park activities, Lake Mills, Wisconsin. Whereas section seven dash seven dash eight and seven dash seven dash twenty of the municipal code of the City of Lake Mills authorizes and directs the city council from time to time to establish a schedule of fees relating to the use and operation of city parks. Now therefore be it moved, that the following scheduled fee shall govern the use and operation of the certain park activities from and after December thirty-one, two thousand fifteen. One, no fees for city, school, or recreation department. Two, no fees for youth leagues not directly competing with recreation department. Three, baseball, softball diamond fees for all others. A, single game, fifty dollars per diamond, Monday through Friday, two hour limit. B, single game, seventy-five dollars per diamond, Saturday to Sunday, two hour limit. C, all day, one hundred and fifty dollars per diamond. D, all day little league complex, four hundred and fifty dollars for four diamonds. This motion becomes effective January one, two thousand sixteen.
And to have a motion of adoption?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Steve, would you, uh, again?
Yep, and this one too, with the use at Wallace Park, um, kind of laying out rules for, um, priority of signing up on a calendar. There is a calendar where all leagues can sign up, uh, for what day they want to practice, play, do their games. And we kind of put the school rec leagues, youth leagues that, um, accept all kids. You know, everybody can play, everybody gets a shot at playing, uh, and we set them a priority level so they can, they can get their time on the diamond. Um, but with Wallace Park, we've had, uh, you know, a lot of like Thundercats and some other little league teams coming in for, uh, having tournaments over the weekend and we're working up those diamonds and not really collecting any fees. So we looked around, um, putting this at, you know, fifty dollars to do a, a single diamond for a game. You know, or seventy-five if we, if it's weekends. Just paying our guys, our city guys are out there doing a lot of work to get those diamonds ready. So we're just kind of recouping a little bit of that money.
Any other discussion?
Does it cover the cost of staff out there?
Um, you know what, for the, for the ones we're charging for, yeah. But like I said, with the rec leagues, the school leagues, uh, teams that take anybody, we're not charging them for the same setup. So, but if they got to go out there for a weekend and prep four diamonds for a weekend tournament, yeah, we're recouping, you know, our time, uh, for being out there. Time and material.
Cause it's four hundred and fifty dollars-
If you wanted to do the-
A league day.
For all four diamonds. You get basically Wallace Park for the day and everything's prepped when you get there, so.
Anyone else?
Thanks for getting this set up.
Yep.
And thanks to the park board for doing that and Rob.
Okay, let's call the vote, please.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundin?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Schar?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Uh, item I, discussion decision on claim for reimburse- reimbursement of water testing costs. This is motion fifteen dash twelve dash two dash eight. Misty, if you would.
City Council motion fifteen dash twelve dash two dash eight, claim for reimbursement of water testing costs, two twenty-five Crestview Lane. Whereas on October twenty-one, two thousand fifteen, the City of Lake Mills received a request for reimbursement for costs incurred from water testing, which is being deemed as though it is a claim for damages pursuant to Wisconsin stats eight ninety-three point eight zero. The request for reimbursement was made by Brandon Lynch, who resides at two twenty-five Crestview Lane, Lake Mills, Wisconsin. And whereas, Lake Mills City Council, having considered the claim and the information presented to it, may act on the claim by allowing it or by disallowing it. Or the council may disallow the claim by simply doing nothing and allowing the one hundred and twenty day period in which to act to expire. Now therefore be it moved, that the Lake Mills City Council has reviewed the claim and hereby disallows the claim in its entirety pursuant to a stat eight ninety-three point eight zero and does direct the city clerk to provide proper notice of this action by certified mail to the claimants.
You have a motion of adoption?
So moved.
And a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion? So Misty, for clarification, a yes vote is to disallow and a no vote is to allow? Is that correct?
That's the way I understand it, yes.
Call the vote, please.
I had a couple of things.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry about that. I just didn't speak up quick enough. Uh, this is one of the calls I had, uh, this last, past few weeks here about this. And the, the person that's making the claim does understand that, uh, we test our water. Uh, some other things were brought abo- up. And I, I didn't have an answer for them as much as, uh, I would love to. Do we test at the water, uh, tower? The water coming out of the water tower? And then I was also noticing on some of the same Facebook feeds that I'm on, there's a lot of people that are up there in that Brookstone area that, uh, will pop up and say, hey, is anybody else's water brown today? So it may be a bigger issue than what we're seeing. Maybe it isn't just a flushing issue, maybe there is something else we need to look at. But, uh, that's just a little bit of info I want to put out there on this. Um, I don't think it affects the way we should rule on, on this, uh, this issue, but I just want to put it out there that people are seeing this more often out there in that area. And, uh, there is some concern about it out there. And, uh, like I said, that was one thing I couldn't answer. I, I know we tested the plant, but I don't know if we tested the water tower and-
We tested all the wells. Uh, we test at, what, thirty different spots throughout the community. Um, we, we do some testing ourselves, um, based on our requirement for DNR, just on a regular testing. So we go to certain spots throughout the community and test. And then for lead and copper, we test multiple sites. That we have a contractor come in and test. Uh, so we get a lot of water testing done, um, on a real, regular basis. Discolored water, as you'll notice, this, uh, gentleman's, um, water was tested fine.
Yep.
Um, exactly consistent with the cities. You know, at, at some point in time, there's some things that might start floating around, a little bit more iron, um, a little bit more magnesium, those types of things. They really don't have, uh, a significant health impact. Iron's actually going to be good for you, which is probably what makes the water brown. Cause that, you know, as it gets more and more iron, it turns more and more red. It, there are a lot of reasons why, um, some of that starts to float around. We did a big water main project out there this year. Um, any bumping on it, any changes in the style flows now starts to change the way the water is done. So the initial construction, now the water mains open, the waters flows are changing, could change how that breaks out. Fire hydrants flushed, uh, fire department uses certain fire hydrants for fire or training. We get, now we have, um, a shift in where people fill up their large water tanks from on the DPW site on CP Avenue to the Light and Water site on, on, um, Industrial Drive, could change that. And as that starts to settle out and change how the flows set, it'll, it'll probably have some disruption in an area. Sometimes it has to- Sometimes it has to do with a new house being constructed next door and how they tapped and how they opened it up. It's, it's so hard to pinpoint what causes the disruption in the system that. But it'll occur from time to time and the best thing to do is run your water until it clears.
And you brought up two good points. The water was potable, it was drinkable. And we do test daily at multiple locations throughout the, throughout the city, so.
I think Paul put out a, a, a note on the
Website.
Website about, and I think that's when they finished that water main, that there would be cloudy water for a period and that it was okay.
I think it's, no, it's fine. Are you done?
Yeah.
I can wait. And I think it's, for the listening public, there's a misconception that if the water is not crystal clear, well, if it is crystal clear, it is perfectly safe. And then if it's got some sort of color to it, it is not safe, and that's not true. Uh, a tinted colored water could be totally safe, maybe an indication that it's not, but crystal clear water can be less healthy for you if it's got contaminants that don't change the color of the water.
Blood.
Just dissolved in it, so.
Blood.
The color of the water is not, uh, it does not have a direct correlation with the safety of the water.
No. Thank you.
Well, and I noticed even with living out there with the, the pipe going in American way, mine's been cloudy a couple times, but also you know, in a case like this, there's a protocol for collecting water a certain way, where it gets tested, how it gets tested. I mean, you can't just grab your water, put it in a cup, tape the top and send it off and, you know, say, hey, can you pay me to have that tested? Because that's not the way it's done, so.
And I think we should point out that year after year after year, the city of Lake Mills has been at the top of the required standards by the state. Uh, they get an A plus rating on their water almost every year. I mean, there's been a couple where we've maybe just been a solid A, otherwise we've just been way at the top.
Call the vote, please.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Shar?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Thank you all. Let's go to item J. This is the discussion decision on awarding the two thousand sixteen grave opening closing contract. Mittner's Land Service LLC. Misty, if you would, please.
City Council motion fifteen dash twelve dash two dash nine, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement between the city of Lake Mills and Mittner Land Services. Be it moved by the city council of the city of Lake Mills, Wisconsin as follows. Section one, that the agreement between the city of Lake Mills and Mittner Land Services, copies of which are attached here to and made a part hereof, is hereby approved. Section two, that the city managers authorized to execute said agreement and it takes such actions as necessary to implement such agreement. The city council does hereby approve the agreement and authorizes the council president to sign the motion.
Any other motion of adoption? So moved. And a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion? They've been very good to us in the past, so it's glad to see them. Offered the contract again. If no other discussion, let's go ahead and call the vote.
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Shar?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Item K, this is resolution fifteen dash forty-five. This is a fund transfer for the dam replacement. Misty, if you would, please.
Resolution fifteen dash forty-five, authorizing the city manager to direct the treasurer to transfer funds. Whereas the city of Lake Mills City Council adopted the two thousand fifteen annual capital budget by ordinance eleven forty-three A. And whereas the adopted two thousand fifteen annual capital budget may only be amended by vote of the city council as provided for under section sixty-five point nine zero sub five sub A of Wisconsin statutes. And whereas the treasurer finance director has requested that the two thousand fifteen annual capital budget be amended by transferring funds from capital dam replacement to local government investment pool, LGIP, account number fifteen. Whereas the treasurer finance director requests to have these funds available for the dam replacement that has been postponed to two thousand sixteen. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Lake Mills that the annual budget of the city of Lake Mills, Wisconsin for the calendar, calendar year beginning January one, two thousand fifteen is hereby amended as follows. Capital fund expenditures for dam replacement adopted three hundred and fifty thousand, amended fifty-two thousand. LGIP account number fifteen adopted zero, amended two hundred and ninety-eight thousand. Total adopted three hundred and fifty thousand, amended three hundred and fifty thousand. Be it further resolved that the city clerk is hereby directed to give required notice to the public in accordance with section sixty-five point nine zero sub five sub A of Wisconsin statutes by publishing said adopted resolution. Be it further resolved that the city council does hereby authorize the council president to sign this resolution.
And do we have a motion of adoption?
So moved.
And a second, please?
Second.
Elizabeth, this is yours, right?
Yes, it is. As you remember, the, the bids were turned down
Right.
for the dam replacement, so we want to move the funds so that we are able to use them next year for this project.
Okay.
And I've deducted from this transfer any of the costs that we've incurred so far.
Very good.
Question?
Does this include the spillway work or does?
Yeah, this is the whole dam project, which is the spillway and the fence and all that.
Well stated.
And the state funds also. So the, the total project is going to be in the five hundred and some thousand dollars, but this is our share. We borrowed the funds in order to keep them from dropping into the debt payment fund. We have to make a motion to segregate them.
Any other question, discussion? Misty?
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Shar?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Well, she's just getting started.
Yeah, you got a lot here. Okay, next resolution is fifteen dash forty-six is a fund transfer. Department of Public Works remodel. Misty, if you would.
Resolution fifteen dash forty-six, authorizing the city manager to direct the treasurer to transfer funds. Whereas the city of Lake, the city of Lake Mills City Council adopted the two thousand fifteen annual capital budget by ordinance eleven forty-three A. And whereas the adopted two thousand fifteen annual capital budget may only be amended by vote of the city council as provided for under section sixty-five point nine zero sub five sub A of Wisconsin statutes. And whereas the treasurer finance director has requested that the two thousand fifteen annual capital budget be amended by transferring funds from capital Department of Public Works remodel to local government investment pool, LGIP, account number fifteen. Whereas the treasurer finance director requests to have these funds available for the remodel of the Department of Public Works that is anticipated to be complete in two thousand sixteen. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Lake Mills, the annual capital budget of the city of Lake Mills, Wisconsin for the calendar year beginning January one, two thousand fifteen is hereby amended as follows. Capital fund expenditures Department of Public Works remodel adopted two million one hundred thousand, amended three hundred thousand. LGIP account number fifteen adopted zero, amended one million eight hundred thousand. Total adopted two million one hundred thousand, total amended two million one hundred thousand. Be it further resolved that the city clerk is hereby directed to give required notice to the public in accordance with section sixty-five point nine zero sub five sub A of Wisconsin statutes by publishing said adopted resolution. Be it further resolved that the city council does hereby authorize the council president to sign this resolution.
And do we have a motion of adoption?
So moved.
And a second, please?
Second.
Elizabeth, this is the same thing, but to a different location, huh?
Right, it's very similar. Um, the, the project is in progress. It's just not completed and we want to make sure that the funds are available for use next year.
Very well. Any other discussion, questions? Misty, would you?
Mr. Shar?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Okay. Resolution fifteen dash forty-seven, fund transfer for street rebuilds. Misty, please?
Resolution fifteen dash forty-seven, authorizing the city manager to direct the treasurer to transfer funds. Whereas the city of Lake Mills City Council adopted the two thousand fifteen annual capital budget by ordinance eleven forty-three A. And whereas the adopted two thousand fifteen annual capital budget may only be amended by vote of the city council as provided for under section sixty-five point nine zero sub five sub A of Wisconsin statutes. And whereas the treasurer finance director has requested that the two thousand fifteen annual capital budget be amended by transferring funds from capital street rebuild and capital storm sewers to a local government investment pool, LGIP, account number thirteen. Whereas the treasurer finance director requests to have these funds available for two thousand sixteen streets work such as chip seal, crack fill, or rebuild. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Lake Mills, the annual capital budget of the city of Lake Mills, Wisconsin for the calendar year beginning January one, two thousand fifteen is hereby amended as follows. Capital fund expenditures, street rebuild adopted four hundred and thirty thousand, amended three hundred and thirty-seven thousand. Storm sewer adopted one hundred and ninety-four thousand, amended one hundred and seventy-two hundred thousand. LGIP account number thirteen adopted zero, amended one hundred and fifteen thousand. Total adapted six hundred and twenty-four thousand, total amended six hundred and twenty-four thousand. Be it further resolved that the city clerk is hereby directed to give required notice to the public in accordance with section sixty-five point nine zero sub five sub A of Wisconsin statutes by publishing said adopted resolution. Be it further resolved that the city council does hereby authorize the council president to sign this resolution.
And do we have a motion of adoption?
So moved.
And a second, please?
Second.
Elizabeth, more of the same, huh?
Um, it's, it's very similar. The streets department is trying to do as much as they can with the money that they have available, so the remaining funds that they did not expend for the projects that were slotted for this year, they want to move as much of that as possible to next year to get as much work done as they possibly can out of these dollars.
Great. And Steve, that's going to be for chipping and whatever?
We're still evaluating. It's kind of like the fun that fixes what goes bad over the winter.
Okay.
So some of the discussion has been a certain amount of mill and overlay on birch from Grant North and then some oil and chip over that all the way from Birch Court south down to, to Grant. And there would be similar projects to that until the funds run out.
Any other questions or comments?
I have a question for Steve. Steve, did the streets department stop like at a normal time? We've had such a, you know, mild fall, early winter here, well, it's not officially winter, but we've gone. You know, did they go longer this year or not?
No, they stopped pretty consistently with what happens typically. We rent right up until the Thanksgiving week. But normally the oil, the asphalt shuts down and the oil and chip, they're not going to do that anymore. You need to do the oil and chip in warmer weather.
Were they doing that in November or did they shut that down?
Well, we did that in, was that September? I think that was mid-September we did oil and chip. And we don't do oil and chip, we contract it, so we're subject to the contractor. Um, so that, that's kind of out of our hands. Um, we did what we could do.
Okay.
And we did a lot of patching coming down right till the end. So you'll note that, that section of prospect between Ferry and, and Madison Street, that was a project that we took on under these conditions and, and so it'll be similar next year. We'll, we'll spend these funds in that way. Was kind of what happened on Madison Street, if you remember, we, we had some funds left over. We utilized a lot of those funds. It took what we were going to do on Madison, extended a lot farther than we originally anticipated and so it, we'll just kind of had some funds left over, we'll, we didn't, we're a little bit more frugal in some areas than we thought and, but we'll we'll continue to, we have plenty of streets to spend it on.
Anybody else? Call the vote, please.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Shar?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
This is, uh, resolution fifteen dash forty-eight conditional use request by John Lundry? Lundry? Uh, for a drive-through on West seven six five nine County Road B. Parcel zero one eight zero seven one three twelve twenty-three dash zero zero three. Misty, please, if you would.
Resolution fifteen dash forty-eight, the Culvers Restaurant, Restaurant Drive-Thru, one ninety West Tarrina Park Road. Whereas the city council of the city of Lake Mills pursuant to the authority conferred by the statutes of the state of Wisconsin has established certain standards and procedures for the use of land and zoning within the corporate limits of the city of Lake Mills. And whereas the city of Lake Mills Title X zoning code has certain requirements for conditional uses in zoning districts. And whereas the petitioner and the owner, John Lundry of subject site described in the application incorporated herein by reference has requested a conditional use permit be granted to allow a drive-through for a permitted restaurant business. And whereas the city manager, consultants, and city staff have reviewed the application documents submitted and have made recommendations concerning approval of said conditional use. And whereas a public hearing before the plan commission concerning the requested conditional use permit was held on November twenty-four, two thousand fifteen, after due notice to solicit testimony from the public. And whereas the plan commission has met and reviewed the evidence and testimony submitted thus far and has considered all of the available factual evidence concerning the requested action and recommended approval to the city council. Be it therefore resolved this fifteenth day of December, two thousand fifteen by the city council of the city of Lake Mills that A, the city council does hereby approve granting said conditional use permit for the subject site with the following conditions. One, the conditional use permit will not be authorized in the site plan not deemed approved until the applicant meets all requirements of the ordinance as noted in the planner's memos. B, the city council does hereby confirm the following findings of fact regarding the requested conditional use. One, the establishment, maintenance, and operation of the proposed conditional use will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare. Two, the conditional use will not be injurious to the, the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted or substantially diminish and impair property values within the neighborhood. Three, the establishment of the conditional use will not impede the normal and orderly development improvement of surrounding property for uses permitted in the district. Four, adequate utilities, access roads, drainage, and/or other necessary facilities will be provided. Five, adequate measures will be taken to provide ingress and egress so designed as to minimize traffic congestion in the public street. Six, the conditional use shall in all respects conform to the applicable regulations of the district in which it is located. Seven, the proposed conditional use at its proposed location is in harmony with the purposes, goals, objectives, policies, and standards of the city of Lake Mills comprehensive plan. Eight, the potential public benefits of the proposed conditional use outweigh any and all potential adverse impacts of the proposed conditional use. C, the city council is hereby authorized the council president to sign the resolution for approval.
And do we have a motion of adoption?
So moved.
And a second, please?
Second.
And I see we have our city planner Dustin available?
We do.
Could you, uh, give us any additional information that we may need?
Uh, the, the need for the conditional use stems from the rewrite of the zoning code. The zoning code update requires that drive-through.
Can't hear you.
Sorry, is this not close enough? Uh, the new code requires that drive-through operations require a conditional use, and the reason for that is in the event that the locationism, the drive-throughs might be near some land uses such as residential where you are concerned about uh, traffic, noise, light, and, and related. The others to make sure that as the memo, as the resolution outlined, that you are accommodating properly the queuing of, of vehicles onsite and then egress to and from the site itself. So really it's to make sure that we're taking a good look at a, a drive-through operation on a commercial property as appropriate. Whereas previously, we wouldn't have required that under the old code. So really the issue could have been someone would have looked at a situation where they had an existing building, wanted to put a drive-through in, uh, and there wouldn't have been anything in there to provide additional scrutiny. So this site obviously is the currently the Pyramid Liquor Site. Be adjacent to Elm Street as extended. The access will be evaluated as a part of the site plan. We don't have that yet, but in order for the site to be appropriate for the potential use of Culvers, they need to make sure that they could have a drive-through facility. So the Plan Commission evaluated it to make sure that the site was appropriate, that the surrounding land uses weren't going to be negatively impacted by a drive-through facility. As you know, this site has been for auto-oriented uses for decades. It's going to continue to do so, to be associated. Uh, it's gonna continue to do so, to be uh, associated for auto oriented uses. Uh, it is quite commonplace for a uh, restaurant to have that kind of convenience. Um, so the uh, plan commission did approve or recommend the approval of the uh, of the conditional use for a drive through facility uh, for the site.
Does that include an ingress and egress to a street or just on their property, this resolution?
This resolution approves the drive through on their site. The ingress egress will still be evaluated uh, by the city engineer, by the planner, by the uh, city manager as is typical for any, any project. So this doesn't grant them the, this grants them the ability to have the drive through, but we still do need to ensure that there is uh, proper queuing uh, for that drive through, which is spelled out in the code. Uh, to ensure that they aren't causing uh, traffic problems out onto what will be Birch or uh, County V.
Elm.
Elm, excuse me, Elm or County V.
I have another question on this one. As we look at the, at the map, it's uh, posted thirty-five currently from the, what will be the intersection of V and Elm down to uh, North Main, Highway eighty-nine. Um, I would assume there will have to be in the future some sort of, of traffic control there, a four-way stop or a light. Uh, stop and go light or something there on Elm and V as traffic increases. Is there, are we able to on V uh, reduce that thirty-five to fifteen as Elm Street is built? Or at the time of Elm Street being built?
No. Um, County Highway V is not a city road.
Okay.
And that's up to the county to control that traffic.
Can we petition for that?
You can petition, but I doubt if they'd grant it. The traffic impact study that we did doesn't justify that action at this point in time. Um, and wouldn't have stop signs on Elm Street as you approach turning into Park Road, but it will not make it a four-way stop. Um, at some point in time when the traffic hits a certain peak period, it will put in traffic islands. Uh, part of the requirement will probably be that there will be additional turn lanes put into the roadway so that um, there'll be uh, left ends and, and left, you know, on both roads. So you'll have three lanes instead of two. Uh, so those'll, those'll probably be required, but as far as uh, speed reduction and uh, full controlled intersections, probably not.
And we wouldn't be able to put a roundabout in immediately? We'd have to wait until a certain traffic volume was reached?
A roundabout is our choice. And hey.
The reason I ask that question is we go ahead with the Elm Street construction and, and we're, you know, putting Culvers with the additional traffic in there. And so we go ahead with the construction and we do it now and we pay for that apron and opening and then we have to turn around and tear it out and, and redo it when growth is there. Now, we don't know when growth will be there. It might be thirty years, it might be five years, but.
Hey, I know that, I know all the conversations and you bring up a roundabout and I know how the community feels about it, but uh, everything I read, every document, every study out there proves that roundabouts are safer. They're faster and they're cheaper in cost. So if it costs you two million dollars to put in a traffic signal, it costs you a million dollars to do a roundabout. You can move traffic through a roundabout in eleven point nine seconds where it takes you thirty seconds through a traffic light. Um, the types of accidents are less deadly. You get more glancing accidents, less T-bone accidents. So a roundabout in my opinion would be a great choice when we needed to control it. I, I don't know that this is the point where we want to control it. When we have to do the north side of the intersection? That may be the point where we'll have to make a decision on traffic islands and potential roundabouts. Uh, but.
Okay, I just bring it up because you know, to put it in and then tear it out and redo it seems to, you know, I understand all behind it, but just trying to save money.
We're not at the threshold yet to, to warrant the need for a uh, for a roundabout. As, as Steve said, the traffic impact analysis that was completed by strand and evaluated by the Department of Transportation. We said, you know, the next step is going to be the um, the, the islands uh, to start controlling the turning movements that you're seeing now uh, to better direct the, the circulation of traffic in this area. And until something happens on the north side, probably not looking at, at uh, some sort of control measure on County V at this, at this point.
There, there are a lot of contributing factors there too, Ed, because you remember County Highway V in this section was just done maybe five years ago.
Yeah.
As you start to put in the roundabout, you're gonna want to consider and other, or other traffic controls. You're gonna, one of the key issues is probably lowering that hill. Well, so as you, and you have a lot of new pavement and a lot of changes, you're gonna want to group as much of an activity together as you possibly can to get the best cost. If you, if you're looking at uh, this Elm Street, which is a small project in comparison with a roundabout in comparison to doing the north side and a full stretch of V, uh, it could be a significant dollar change in, in a and really would impact the intersection a lot more understanding what that full design will be at that point in time. So the, you know, there, there are always potential cost savings now, but I, I think in this one, waiting and seeing what happens is in our best interest.
Here's another good reason for waiting. I think that the, if the public starts to experience frustration at the corner of Elm and V, then we talk about putting in a roundabout and some of them are gonna say, well, that's probably not a bad idea, even though I don't like roundabouts. But to put one in before there's a problem, I think we would be asking for a lot of disgruntlement.
Especially since it's not our road. That may be raising some eyebrows too.
A lot of the development will be in the city and so we'll be, I'm sure we'll be participating through the tid in some form or fashion and but in ex, in making changes on that roadway, the, the question is, is most of the frustration right now is going to occur at the intersection of Main and Tyranina in relationship to Quick Trip and BP. And adding lanes and islands and more traffic direction will probably become more important at that intersection than it will be at Elm. Elm is probably not gonna be the real driver. In fact, Elm is probably gonna be the relief. Elm and Birch will end up being relief points for, for Main Street at that point. And, and probably uh, think uh, a good transportation plan to have done so. Um, but at some point in time, we will have to pay attention to what's going on at that intersection closer than we have.
But now we just gonna vote on uh, whether or not we're gonna grant a conditional use permit for a drive through.
Right.
And we're not even at the site plan or nothing, so we're getting away, way ahead of ourselves. So um, any discussion on, on the drive through concept?
Well, I think the planning commission did a good job at the planning commission.
I did.
So I don't have any problem with passing this.
Yep. Having said that, let's call the vote.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Mr. Kirkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Thank you Dustin for that clarification. And now we're going to resolution fifteen forty-nine amendment, amendment number three to the territory and project plan for tax increment district number four. Um, this is resolution fifteen dash forty-nine, Misty, if you would.
Resolution fifteen dash forty-nine, resolution amending the boundary and approving the tax incremental district number four project plan for city of Lake Mills, Wisconsin. Whereas pursuant to sixty-six point one one zero five with stats, provides the authority and procedure for creation of tax increment districts. And whereas city of Lake Mills has determined that the use of tax incremental financing is required to promote development and redevelopment within the city. And whereas pursuant to sixty-six point one one zero five with stats, the city of Lake Mills has created tax incremental district number four, city of Lake Mills on July eighteen, two thousand six as mixed use district. And whereas amendment number one to tax incremental district number four was approved by the city of Lake Mills on September eighteen, two thousand seven. And whereas amendment number two to tax incremental district number four was approved by the city of Lake Mills on March twenty, two thousand thirteen. And whereas the city now desires to amend the project plan to add territory to the district in accordance with the provisions of section sixty-six point one one zero five of the Wisconsin statutes. And whereas the lands is illustrated in exhibit A of this resolution and described in appendix A of the project plan will be added to the district. And whereas a public hearing was properly noticed and held on November twenty-four, two thousand fifteen, wherein interested parties were afforded a reasonable opportunity to express their views on the proposed creation of a tax increment district and the proposed boundaries thereof. And whereas the plan commission has prepared the tax incremental district number four, amendment number three project plan to include A, a statement listing of the kind, number and location of all proposed public works or improvements within the district or to the extent provided in section sixty-six point one one zero five sub two, sub F, one, K and section sixty-six point one one zero five sub two, sub F, one, N of the Wisconsin statutes outside of the district. B, an economic feasibility study. C, a detailed list of estimated project costs. D, a description of the methods of financing all estimated project costs in a time when the related costs or monetary obligations are to be incurred. E, a map showing existing uses and conditions of real property in the district. F, a map showing proposed improvements and uses in the district. G, proposed changes of zoning ordinances, master plan, map, building codes and city ordinances. H, a list of estimated non-project costs. I, a statement of the proposed plan for relocation of any persons to be displaced. J, a statement indicating how the amendment of the district promotes, promotes the orderly development of the city. K, an opinion of the city attorney or of an attorney retained by the city advising that the plan is complete and complies with section sixty-six point one one zero five sub four, sub F of the Wisconsin statutes. Whereas the proposed project plans, project costs may include cash grants made by the city to owners lest these are developers of land that is located within the tax incremental district and provides within the proposed boundary and within a half mile radius of the proposed boundary of the district. And now therefore be resolved on the recommendation of the plan commission. The city council finds that one, the boundaries, boundaries of tax incremental district number four be amended to include the lands as specified in exhibit A of this resolution. Two, not less than fifty percent of the district by area is suitable for mixed use development. Three, the district is declared to be a mixed use district and the new residential development is not a part of the project plan. Four, the equalized value of the taxable property of the district plus the value increment of all existing districts does not exceed twelve percent of the total equalized value of taxable property within the city. Five, any property standing vacant which comprises more than twenty-five percent of the area in the district is suitable for mixed use development and the proposed project plan promotes these uses. Six, the amended project plan for the district was approved by the plan commission and the plan commission recommended the approval of tax increment district number four amendment number three to the city council on November twenty-four, two thousand fifteen. Seven, the territory annexed by the city after January one, two thousand four is subject to an agreement with the town of Lake Mills and outlines a formula for revenue sharing. Eight, the amended project plan for the district is feasible and promotes orderly development in the city in conformity with the comprehensive plan. Be it further resolved that the city council of the city of Lake Mills approves such amended project plan and territory for tax incremental financing district number four pursuant to the provisions of section sixty-six point one one zero five with stats. Adopted by the city council of the city of Lake Mills is fifteenth day of December, two thousand fifteen.
Do you have a motion of adoption?
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
Misty, are you okay?
I am okay.
Discussion? Dustin, would you?
I'll start by apologizing to Misty for that uh, resolution. Sadly, the state uh, Department of Revenue uh, is very specific in what needs to be in the approving resolution. Uh, and it's all of those elements and the Department of Revenue goes through them to make sure they're all there. So when we are getting the, the tid certified, uh, it has checked all the appropriate boxes, so thanks for reading that.
Sure.
It's quite long-winded. Um, this item, uh, amending project plan uh, and the boundary for tid four, which is the third amendment, um, dovetails nicely with the uh, previous item, uh, which is the, which was the Culvers. This is in essence adding the lands that you have recently annexed, which is uh, the Pyramid Liquor Site and then the remnant lands that you acquired from Simden for uh, Elm Street. Uh, it also includes Linda Keith properties which are immediately south of uh, the Lake Mills Market. So it's that uh, vacant lands over there. Um, in essence, the uh, inclusion of these projects, of, of these lands um, will specifically make it possible for the city to undertake the construction of, of Elm Street. Um, the value that is anticipated with the Culvers project will help uh, pay for those uh, pay for those improvements. Um, this like, as it indicates, is the third territory amendment. You are allowed four territory amendments in the life of a, a tax increment district. Um, so you do still have kind of one more left in your hip pocket should you decide you need it. Um, the project plan is updated to include um, current kind of pro forma financials that were provided by your financial consultant, Aylers. Uh, and those were kind of walked through at the public hearing that was held last month at the, at the plan commission. Um, this project plan amendment and territory amendment has been introduced to the taxing jurisdictions. A joint review board was convened earlier in uh, November uh, to kind of um, uh, introduce this to them. Ultimately, should the uh, uh, council decide to approve the project plan and the boundary, it would then go to the joint review board for their ultimate decision. Uh, it's important to note that the joint review board makes the decision on whether or not the amendment to the boundary and the project plan will occur, but the expenditure of any dollars falls with the council. Uh, so that has always been the case. Um, uh, this tax increment district is in good financial shape. Kind of looking over at uh, at the uh, treasurer on this. Um, but the uh, the, really the need is to um, include uh, the Culvers lands uh, within this uh, to, to make certain, certain projects kind of go, uh, which is the, which is the Elm Street project. We've also included Linda Keith properties, um, because should development occur and it's kind of what's next in the area, it's going to need some public improvements as well to kickstart it, to make, uh, there's gonna be some, some, probably some utility extensions, some egress improvements uh, necessary there to assist um, making that happen just as you did across the street with the Lake Mills Market. Um, and the Lake Mills Market now has, well, that site has added the uh, Anytime Fitness and some of the others. I think that building had a, had a value of about a million dollars. So again, those things are assisting with um, ensuring that this, that this uh, tid is cash flowing. The new pro forma says that the, with the um, addition to Culvers, that the tid will close even a year earlier than previously um, anticipated after amendment two. So I don't know if there's any specific questions that you have on this?
Counsel?
When does this um, district expire?
Twenty twenty-seven, working from memory.
What is it?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven?
Could, could be earlier if you've paid off any borrowings that you've undertaken.
And is it, given the fact that there's development going on and could be more coming? Um, we have only one left, one, one change?
One territory amendment left, but you have to remember lands um, kind of north of the uh, Quick Trip uh, are all included in this, which is, which is vacant lands.
Right.
The lands kind of surrounding McDonald's are included in this, which are, are large tracts of vacant land. Um, so again, those were properties that have been outlined in the project plan for years. They're gonna need some, some roadway extensions, some utility extensions, some uh, electrical work. And you've been utilizing um, the increment generated, okay Steve? The increment generated from uh, the projects uh, to, to pay for some of those, those borrowings. Um, you know, most notable of, of this was that, that the increment was used to pay for kind of reclaiming the land for the Walgreens site. To make the Walgreens site happen. You know, they had to package up the old Union Seventy-Six site and a couple of homes, et cetera, to redevelop that, but there was still some environmental remediation that needed to occur. So kind of without the tid, that project really wouldn't have gotten off the ground.
Mm-huh.
Um, and then the same, you could see we have the uh, in the, on the graphic in the upper left corner is the um, the Lake Mills Market site. That needed um, some uh, infrastructure improvements um, to, to serve the site. So uh, without the assistance of, of tid to help, um, I guess kind of um, drive the spurs into the uh, into it a little bit, um, some of these things wouldn't have happened uh, as readily. While there's land available, it really does take some of these um, uh, this reimbursement of these, of these increment, of this increment to make some of these projects happen or happen um, more quickly. You can see that some- You can see that some of those properties have been vacant for a long time and nothing has happened. But this is another tool to help should developers come knocking to, to make certain things happen out there.
One of the things that we, from my perspective, looked at, we, we've made improvements on Birch Street. We removed the Birch Street electric substation and put in a whole set of different transformers. We did a big, large service to the school. We actually went underground with all the electric in this area out to here. We ran a, a water main all the way out to the interstate now, so that we can just pop under the interstate to go over to the north side. We ran a water main all the way out to the far end of this project. We redid the lift station at this location. One of the projects that was in the original prospectus was, was Elm Street. But due to costs of, of the overall projects, the cost of land accumulation, the reduction in the levy because of Act one forty-five and a couple other, and Act ten. And then the assessment changes, thanks to Walgreens. We had to slow Elm Street down now. Now Culvers will bring enough dollar value to maintain the construction on Elm Street. The loss on Walgreens is made up for by the new construction of the Anytime Fitness Building. And so we, we generally believe that we, we will have more than adequate revenue based on pretty conservative estimates to finish this project. We have debated that in twenty-twenty-two, you can no longer spend money. Then the rest of it is just revenues to pay off debt. So you can't add a new project after that date. So we could do similar to what we did in TID Number Two, where we laid, overlaid TID Number Six on it, depending on what, what needs to be done in this area. So if there's vacant lands, we could overlay a TID Number Seven on TID Number Four and, and utilize that. It depends on how we want to structure it and what benefits we believe are important. I mean, there've been some issues here that have been way beyond our ability to deal with or comprehend, and it's left some land vacant that probably would have been driven under most nor, normal circumstances. So maybe at some point in time, maybe we have to
Steve, have you forgotten, is the old Plainer Building involved in the TID?
Yes, it is.
So we don't have to go to a Fourth Amendment to
Nope, nope.
Take care of that.
The old Plainer Building is in. Yeah, this site is in. All this acreage here is in. We're adding this one. We're adding this area here. It's a, it's a pretty substantial. You can see there that, that's what it looks like in the old Plainer. Our site is right here. There's apartments here. This is the, the Fort Health. And then you get into areas there here, like Walgreens and Ace and Jimmy John's.
So this puts us in a pretty good position that we are unlikely to need the fourth, Dustin?
I, I don't, we don't know, but again, it's, you could have unlimited project plan amendments. It's really just adding or subtracting territory that you're limited to four in the life of, of the TID. I don't foresee it. I would think if you decided to do something on the north side of the interstate, you'd probably just do it its own TID, because you want to reset the clock on some things. So really, I, I don't, I'd hate to say I don't foresee a fourth. There might be, some of these have been, you know, two and three have been pretty small amendment, territory amendments, all things considered, you know. You, you did Amendment Number One, because at the time you did the original, which is focused on the, the Main Street and Tyranida Road kind of intersection. The property owner who owns the lands north of Quick Trip and north of McDonald's didn't want to be in at that time, and then shortly thereafter, kind of seeing some of these things, decided he did want to be in. And so we didn't foresee that at the time. Came in, you know, we're not, not forcing anybody to be in the TID. It does benefit people with, with commercial properties. But, you know, I, I'd hate to say no, we're not going to do it, but I'd be surprised.
Thank you.
Anything else? Call the vote, Miss Teefy.
Mr. Grunden?
Aye.
Mr. Kirkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed five-zero.
Item P, Ordinance eleven sixty, Stop Sign at Elm and Grant Street. This is the third reading. Miss Teefy, if you'd read that, please?
Ordinance eleven sixty, stops, stop sign located at Elm and Grant Street. The City Council of the City of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, does ordinate as follows. Section one pursuant to Wisconsin statutes, Section three forty-nine point zero-seven, the City of Lake Mills is authorized to designate locations for the placement of stop signs. Section two. Section six dash two dash three, stop signs placement is amended by adding the following. Elm Street at its intersection with the north curb line of Grant Street. Section three pursuant to the authority granted by Wistat, Section three forty-nine point zero-eight, Sub-Six, the City of Lake Mills is authorized to designate locations for the placement of yield right-of-way signs at designated intersections. Section four. Section six dash two dash four, traffic control at intersections is amended by deleting the following location for yield right-of-way signs. That portion is Elm Street at its intersection with the north curb line of Grant Street. Section five, this ordinance was sponsored by Council Representative Ed Grunden. Section six, this ordinance shall take effect upon passage and publication as required by law.
And they have a motion of adoption?
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
Ed, this is yours. You got anything to add?
No, and I just to repeat that constituents were looking at the yield sign, not slowing the traffic down, and there were some near misses. So hopefully, having a stop sign will keep the intersection safer.
Very good. Anything else? Call the vote, please.
Mr. Kirkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grunden?
Aye.
Motion passed five-zero.
Item nine, Recommendations for Future Agendas. Is that anyone? Steve?
I know the one is the Special Events Permit. That was requested to be on an agenda. I have been working on that vigorously. So I should be ready either the first or the second meeting. We'll probably be looking at final special assessment resolutions. Couple other minor projects that we have. But that's pretty much it.
Counsel, you have anything? Anyone else?
What, what is the closing date for papers for the offices?
January fifth.
They have to be in the office here, January fifth?
Yep, five P.M.
That's a Saturday, isn't it?
One, two, three, four, five. No, it's a Tuesday.
It's a Tuesday. Well, be. All right. Item ten. Convening to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute nineteen point eight-five, Paragraph One Charlie, compensation and performance evaluation data of employees over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Call the vote, please.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grunden?
Aye.
Mr. Kirkovich?
Aye.
Motion passed five-zero.
And we will reconvene in five minutes.